All right, um, we need a motion to reconvene, open session, please.
Second.
Thank you Beth and John. All in favor of reconvening, reconvening? All right, very good. To welcome you this evening, please stand and join us in place of pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to move into the recognition portion of the agenda. So, I believe it's the junior high this evening. Mr. Allison?
What's that?
Would that be you?
Where?
You have good news for us.
I have good news?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have a computer.
I will read it.
Will you read for me?
I'll go.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison would like to recognize one of the Hillsboro Junior High students, Scarlett Hasty, running the Lions Club International Peace Roster Contest at the district level. Scarlett is a seventh grade student and wore a poster in Ms. Robbins' Melzer's art class. Sponsored by the local Lions, the international competition reflects one of the key tenets of the Lions to create and foster a spirit of understanding among the people of the world. Congratulations to Scarlett and good luck to her at the next level.
And I have a recognition I'd like to make this evening. I'd like to recognize Dr. Isaacson. He was nominated and won the Jane 98 110% Award from the, at the Chamber of Commerce Awards Banquet this past Friday. He was recognized for his outstanding dedication and his extraordinary community service. And we are extremely proud and we know this will be the first of many awards in the future. So, congratulations. Okay, and we do not have any signups this evening. So, we'll move on to the agenda item, items. I need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you Beth and John. Any discussion, discussion or items that need to be pulled or discussed or tweaked? Anything like that? Okay. So, the motion then is to approve all the items on the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. And the motion carries. Very good. That brings us to our reports and we'll start with Dr. Isaacson Superintendent.
It was just on the system before Dr. Andrew. It was showing that it was approved before.
Okay.
The day.
It does. So, I think you try and do extras on paper.
I'll take it.
All right, so John, let me move on then to the student's agenda report.
Couple of things to talk to. The first one, just to keep you heads up, and I visited with Kathy Woodham, our district head nurse. She's actually going to be here next month. She asked if I could push it back just to come and talk about some of the exciting things that all our nurses are doing. They're really getting integrated with our health department. And I'm just, from child for kids to wellness fans for employee wellness, providing opportunities for students to visit the doctors from the Jefferson County to just pushing out programs, communicating with parents with a newsletter. So, I don't want to steal all her thunder, but I wanted to have her come and just talk about it because it's pretty impressive what they're all doing and working together. My lens of wanting to have them talk about that. And so then, next is the Soul Swole presentation. And we have some representatives from the junior high, Dave Pierce and Jennifer Morrison. They're coming to talk about their program.
Yeah, let's do it. So, we actually presented this, uh, we won't do this whole thing, that would take up too much time. We just wanted to talk a few minutes about a program that we started last year. Um, that we were at the junior high, that we really feel strongly about, that its benefits have reached beyond just physical education and really been helpful with student self-esteem and sensory issues and mental health overall. So, we wanted to share this. We actually presented at the Missouri School Counselor Conference in November. And so, we just wanted to share with you what we've been doing to kind of get creative and include more kids and get excitement about strength and conditioning and also kind of highlight the mental health benefits that we've seen as well. So, um, this is just a picture of first semester's girls' section of intimidation-free strength and conditioning. So, um, we'll tell you a little bit about why we call it that and what's special about this class. You guys know what a traditional PE class is, I won't spend time on that. But we were just seeing some issues coming into the counseling office, enough to where we were noticing it was an issue and maybe we could get creative and help students and solve these problems. So, just, you know, students getting anxious and avoiding PE class if it wasn't, if they felt like it wasn't their thing, if they were nervous about, you know, team sports or traditional PE. Students that had sensory issues, really struggling in the traditional PE class where you have to interact or if, um, you know, a lot of touching or physical contact. And then students not participating and not getting excited about, always about traditional PE or students being intimidated to try strength and conditioning class. So, we wanted to really break down that barrier, so.
Now, one of the benefits of this class is that even though the class is a strength and conditioning class, we have separate racks in there, so the kids basically have a group within the whole group. So, everybody breaks down, so me and Jen will be partners. This is my only really sensory person. So, we found a good fit for all those kids, so they worked together, they had a good niche. So, it wasn't 10 kids all working out together trying to do the same thing. They got to break up into their groups. It was just two people, the communication was a lot better with the smaller class. Plus, I could visit more and talk more and find out kind of mentally, personally, how things are going. And I spent a little bit more time, positive quote every day. We kind of talked and reflected more than just, here we go, 30 kids, we gotta get going. The smaller class sizes really helped to make it personalized. So, each kid got a little bit more attention and it made him feel at ease when we got to talking about it. Like, I just feel more comfortable. And then it wasn't competing, there wasn't you struck out, you didn't get a hit. It was just everybody succeeding and lifting and beating, and I just wanted a better version of themselves. So, they're basically competing with themselves, they just didn't know it. And they were all progress either by losing weight, getting stronger, or just getting a better feel of their self-esteem. So, it really benefited, as we found out later, when they told us feedback. I mean, I got feedback daily from their exercises, but when they told us later that I feel better about myself, or one young lady was like, I just go for walks now and before I couldn't get it, you know, she's like, that's what I just do to blow off steam. So, we talked about the stress relief of exercise and how you can do this the rest of your life, so.
And we didn't even realize what we were doing when we did it, but we started with the section of girls. And there was a benefit to that because just typically, girls communicate and give you more feedback at this age, you know? And so, they were, um, he was really able to focus on some things with building self-esteem and talking, educating about the body science of things and also how it affects your mental health and just being able to go slower and encourage them and really, um, it was really cool to see how many girls wanted to continue the next semester with the regular strength and conditioning class. And if it didn't fit in their schedule, they were really bummed. So, this was the very first class that we had. So, like you said, we had a small group dynamic, really focused on education and no pressure of talking for you.
Right, no, that's right. As we got into all these lists, a lot of times they're like, I don't feel comfortable with my body. And once they realized they were all doing the same thing and it wasn't, no one was always spotlighting what they were doing, and they could kind of go off, like I said, to their rack. And they really started to kind of come out of their shell because they're like, it's just me and my partner. I'm not embarrassed, I'm not ashamed of what I'm doing. And they see they got stronger, like I said, they lost weight. They did, so it really just benefited once they're kind of like, looking at me doing stuff. And then they kind of branched out, they got bigger and bigger. So, they're all, on max days, they're all supportive of each other and cheering because they got 50 pounds instead of 45. I mean, it was just, it kind of snowballed and took off. So, it was really a pleasant experience for me.
But we, um, it was really funny with the boys group because at first we thought it wasn't successful because they weren't giving us any feedback. And then later we found out that that was their favorite class. Like, we went back and talked to them as freshmen this year and they really gave us some great feedback. But we wouldn't have known it because they're just, you know.
Right, but the girls were very open with sharing. They're like, I feel better about myself, I can tell different, a physical change. And the boys are like, I'm not getting nothing. They come in there, they work out, I'm like, are they enjoying it? Are we doing good? But they came in there and then we found out later, they were like, oh, I can lift up this 40 pound rock salt or stuff they were doing around the house that they couldn't do before. And they're like, I got this, mom. And they were telling us stories about things that they didn't do before. And I was like, I'll get that, so.
So, um, I'll just, I'll just show you a little bit. Just the survey was, we gathered data from last year's class. Don't want to spend too much time on it, but you can kind of see, students reported that they continued to do some sort of physical activity even if they still weren't doing strength and conditioning class at the high school. They were doing something. But then there was some really good feedback, just quotes from the students on our survey that was very encouraging. So, we're, we plan to continue to do that. I think it's a great opportunity for students to find something and to help build that confidence, so.
And it's a lifelong skill. So, I mean, a lot of these people, the students took it home and they told their mom or their dad or their brother and sister or, so they kind of paid it forward to other people. So, it was really exciting to me to see that they were, like I said, they're helping mom or dad, they're helping brother or sister. So, it really kind of, like I said, just took off and snowballed, so I really enjoyed it.
One girl said, I don't know why, I'm not as stressed this year. We're like, hmm, because you're exercising, you know? So, it's really cool for them to make those connections and realize the impact it has, so. Thanks for letting us share that with you because we're really excited about it. It's something that we really think is making a difference.
I want to add something real quick on that before they leave. If you're not familiar with how the junior high works, our strength and conditioning is one of our most popular classes. But what we see out of that is typically, almost every, half the people in our school do some sort of sport or activity. Everybody's going to be in the NBA or major league baseball when they're in junior high. So, it's very popular. But one thing that Jennifer came, came to us, Dave and I, it was concerned that there are a lot of kids that aren't in sports and these kids were who they targeted. And I just want you to kind of understand that these are not the kids that are on the basketball team or that, or to dance privately, you know, or other things in the community. These are kids who, I don't know if any of them had really done a sport that I know of. They were just kids that kind of fly under the radar. And Jennifer and I were talking with Dave about, as an adult, we should all want to keep in shape. And if you haven't learned that along the way, if your parents haven't impressed that on you or your coach didn't impress that on you, you may not follow best practices. So, these kids were actually sought out without them even knowing it by talking to their PE teachers. Like, who do you think would be a good hard worker but maybe doesn't want to play kickball or doesn't want to play flag football? And I don't know if we gave them a choice or not. I think we kind of told them they were going to need to try it. And we told them if they got that bad that we'd drop them out of it. But I don't think we had one single person ever, even after any amount of time, say, no, I need to drop this. So, the, the target audience, I thought, was really unique. And that's why Jennifer and Dave went down to that conference to talk. And I think they were a big success. They don't like to toot their own horn, but if you were a counselor down there at that conference, I guarantee that was the most unique presentation that you would have seen and it had a lot of benefits. So, very proud of them and it's something that people don't always realize because those kids aren't scoring the winning touchdown on a Friday night or their name isn't in the paper maybe, but all of those kids learned something out of that. And I think they're having a better freshman year for it, so.
Is this class offered above seventh and eighth grade or is it just eighth grade?
Just eighth grade right now. We just don't have the space or the means. I mean, it's full, seven hours a day with eighth grade.
Wow.
So, we don't have, we don't, we don't have the facilities for it.
I know fifth and sixth graders who did it for our primary high.
So, we have talked about ideas of, even if you're not in the weight room, doing some different types of PE classes for kids that they're more comfortable with. Um, and so, we definitely, and we have PE teachers that are excited about that and want to work together on that. And it was really cool when we talked to other school districts, they were like, we need this, like, um, you know? So, that was really fun. And we had people follow up with us and they want to go get the certification that Coach P got. And so, it was just neat to see that people.
I have a little nice on athletics. This would be absolutely wonderful for him.
Yeah.
We make it a focus at home to focus on, yeah, physical health, mental health, you know, and we walk. But this would be perfect for him, so.
So, how are you going to choose students in the future for this? Is it the same way, just kind of have PE teachers recommend them?
So, what has been nice is that it's an eighth grade class, so we can get to know students in the seventh grade and see how they did in the traditional PE class and kind of get to know them. So, it's worked this way so far by recommendation. Um, because we did want to keep it a little bit smaller, not quite as full as a regular class to keep the intimidation factor and the comfort level. But, I mean, we're open to trying anything that might work, so.
What were the names from, I'm not sure.
The presentation, Mr. Ramsey. We couldn't figure out what to call it because we were, just wanted to focus on it's more than just the weightlifting aspect. It's good for your whole body and mind, so.
You might consider MSBA conference next fall as part of presentation since you're already together. Yeah, that's great. September, the end of September, first off.
To talk to our agent.
I wanted to just visit briefly on severe inclement weather, proceeding 12-month employees. We don't have anything on the, let's say, and actually, I was using what Josh, um, said on, some of these days when it's midday and it's getting, like over Christmas break and we send staff home, there's some times where the weather is deteriorating and somebody's sitting there because they've just been hired or they haven't. And they're putting in their time and we're like, potentially creating an unsafe situation. It's just, I don't know if it's a authority, it's, it doesn't, I don't know if it has to be a board policy. Some of it's just playing it by ear. I don't ever want to get into a situation where, well, I have to go home because there's a situation. And board policy says, is just, what's the board's thoughts on a 12-month employee? Even hourly, like, hey, it's deteriorating, you need to go home. And I sent out a text about a week ago and kind of facilitated that, that we had to get Ms. Lanza to us down in Montaire. It's like, hey, you need to go. Um, I do think it plays a huge role in employee morale, you know, that we care about people. But also some flexibility too with, like, rate staff is if we get a snowstorm and we know that we're not ems, some flexibility to be like, hey, change your shift. You don't need to be in at four o'clock in the morning because we're going to get six inches of snow. It's a better use of district dollars, like, everybody reported. And we're going to get it cleaned up for tomorrow rather than somebody coming in at five, 28 hours of plowing while I was dumping on it. Thoughts on that? There's just some flexibility, the ability to send people home, but they would be paid during that time. So, there is a financial.
There's no policy forbidding that, right?
No, I think it's just superintendent's discretion, but.
We need to think about our, about their best interests and their safety.
Because then, sometimes it comes up with our classified staff or paras, we're sending people home early. Like, the teachers get to home because of their salary, but you're hourly like, okay, you know, type of situation.
Well, I mean, it depends, like you said, some of them down the south, where down the south got hit worse than we did. And, you know, regions make a difference too, so.
Just kind of like, in those situations, I'll communicate with the board and everyone, hey, we're sending staff home, Missouri. A reminder of the required training for board members on sexual abuse. The one-hour online refresher, I put that information in there, uh, the training and phone number. So, I'll let you read through that.
We decided to do it individually before.
We were a little late on getting everything. I said you were going to have it later.
Oh, yeah, we were slow. But it's, two of us have done it. It's not very difficult, it takes an hour and the quiz at the end is not very difficult either. But it's just, I'm putting, putting the time in, so it's required to go off, you have to do it.
The State of the County Address and Breakfast is February 17th. That's President's Day morning at 7:00 AM at Festus. Uh, we're going to reserve a table, the district, a table of eight. And so, if you'd like to attend on that, uh, let me know. And so, then we'll just pull up the table of eight. It's a, I'll send that out to administrators and we'll fill up the table. But if you'd like to attend, uh, it's usually a pretty good event, like, uh, we hosted a couple of years ago. Dr. Lotrell will speak and then Mr. Gobero and then Dennis Gannon gives a State of the County Address.
It's at Festus.
It's at Festus, at their gymnasium. So, it's just a breakfast, usually lasts to probably, I don't know, 9:00, 9:30?
No, that's not very long.
Not very long. So, if you'd like to go, just, uh, shoot me an email and we'll add you to the list. Regarding Board of Education signups and election information. The district had three openings and three individuals signed up on, by the January 21st, 2020 deadline. Ms. Noek and myself went to the clerk of court and certified those. I actually received a letter from the governor's court. And we will not be having a school board election this, this year. The, uh, congratulations to Petrie incumbent, Angie Oshie incumbent and Eric Stevenson. Uh, will be joining the Board of Education.
And how much money does that save?
It always depends from year to year based on what's on the ballot. Usually nine to 11,000-ish. Nice little chunk of money.
But again, here's our democratic duty as a governing body, to challenge, how do we get challenged? We don't have people sign up.
This is the first time that this has ever happened here.
No. Doesn't keep us honest.
I don't see anybody this honest to you. I'm going to stay as honest as I can, y'all.
And then also the, uh, the week of February 9th through the 15th. Since they surprised me with the recognition, I'm going to surprise the board with the recognition. Even though I was in the agenda, that's what's going to surprise them. We'd like to recognize our school board. I thank you to the members of our board for their service to our school and community. And while Ms. Hiller Grant is handing out certificates, on behalf of MSBA, I'll read the governor's proclamation, uh, for example, of Mark Carson. Whereas a system of quality of public education is essential for the future of our state and nation. Whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education in our local school districts. Whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts. Whereas local school boards acting on behalf of, in close connection with the people of their communities, chart the direction of education in our communities. Whereas local school boards serve as a key community advocate for children in youth of public schools. Now, therefore, I'm Michael Carson, Governor of the state of Missouri. Do hereby proclaim February 9th through the 15th, 2020, to be school board recognition. In Missouri and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve their public schools through quality leadership and testimony. Where I have here on two, set my hand, the college will be fixed by the great seal of the state of Missouri, the city of Jefferson, on the 19th of October, 2020. And also, I mean, just especially, the school board, when you think about elected official, was the most accessible, in my mind, level of government. And so, you know, you can't get in touch with Mr. Carson, Irving, you're not going to get in touch, uh, touch with a representative or a senator. And people, you know, you're accessible, you're, you're, when it comes to democratic government, a school member is very accessible, him and Mayor Russell. Except for the norm as far as mayors go, but is, and so, it's a very visible and a position that takes a lot of your time, serving our communities and dealing with, uh, difficult issues sometimes, but also exciting issues. You see good events throughout there, we thank you for your service, uh, to our community and school, so.
Okay, so we'll move on then to our financial. Go ahead, you can do it.
Um, if Ms. Phillips had come up, we have good news. It has got, had like a good news, it is good news. But when we got it, we're like excited, we're like, huh. Is Ms. Phillips has written two grants, the school buses, that we've gotten again.
Yay!
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was like.
You're so good at it, you did it again.
Uh, it is, we got a.
But we spent so much money to get the money.
A federal, that's trouble. It's, it's a federal grant, um, but it's approximately.
One state, one federal.
One state, one's federal. One, like, last year we got three on a state grant, this year we got one for approximately $22,000. And then, uh, we have the federal grant. Ms. Gange and myself and with Ms. Phillips, we had extensive conversations because you have to spend money to get the bus, right? It's like 20, a bus is anywhere from almost $70,000 to $100,000. So, you're spending money, but how do you give away free money? Because you know that you're going to need buses, that was kind of our conversation. And then, putting out the expenditures of $70,000 all at once at a time. Last year, we did lease purchase. I know that when you look at financing things, that's, you know, we like to pay cash for it. But also, if you can't afford that, we have, is looking at our total budget, health insurance and all of those facility needs, is looking at what can we do? And then, is it still the end game? If you finance it, plus you have to take off, I asked Ms. Phillips to contact the dealership to be like, how much would that bus be worth by the trade-in? Because if we're getting $22,000 for it, you have to drill a hole through the engine. But how much would they give you for it? Those five or six thousand, five or six thousand dollars. Then you're factoring in what's the cost to do a lease purchase. What's the interest that you pay on it, plus the $5,000 that you're giving up? Is, are we still netting ahead? And we are, um, trying to keep up on our buses. One of the discussions too that we had is, um, looking at our mini-buses. Mr. Schuster, we had talked about that after a facility meeting and I don't want to speak for you, I mean, you have.
No, I just had, yeah, somebody had approached me about the mini-buses because she was seeing newer big buses, you know, and she had a special needs student and spent a long time getting home sometimes. She was like, it's an hour, you know, sometimes longer, it seems like the buses. Mini-buses are not in best repair sometimes, like, they break down.
Well, mine is on a regular bus, it's a couple of hours, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the time here, everyone, 75 square miles, the time when they get home is not, just, I mean, you could speak to that better than I could, but.
Yeah, and she was indicating, you know, that was like the minimum, sometimes it was longer, you know? She was saying it was really long. She was just, but the repair thing is what really got me and I wondered, okay, we need a mini-bus. Sounds like we do.
Well, Ms. Phillips, I asked you, one, what can you, I asked, I shared everything. Well, Rochelle, I asked you, one, what can you, I asked, I shared everything that you had shared. Regarding the length of trips, kind of what has impacted that as far as the special education students and.
It has a lot to do with the amount of miles that they have to travel in between students, but also, too, the amount of time it takes to load the students, the amount, if we're waiting on a parent, if we're waiting on a daycare that's supposed to be there, all of that impacts the length of time. They can take longer to load, that is true. So I mean, with that, yes, I don't know what bus they're talking about, what the bus number.
I, I could find that out, but yeah.
Because, I mean, because we do, we do have bus sixty-three, which it runs one of the longest routes, and it's always in good repair. So I'm not sure what bus it would be, but I would like to know.
Yeah.
If you can find out for me, so I can kind of, you know, figure, I'd like to help for it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So.
Well, along those lines, we, Ms. Gange, myself, Rochelle had a conversation, and we asked like, alright, what, what do we do here? Is, is there a need for the mini bus? The big buses, how do we prioritize that? And kind of, what are your thoughts on that as far as?
The reason why I, I wanted to go ahead and get the bigger buses is we right now have twelve buses that are super old, are two thousand, they're two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We have twelve of those. I do have, I do have a need for many buses, I would like to try to get them next year if I could. Because I, right now, I have spares that we can use on those other many routes if something would break down. So that's the reason why I was justifying, it's probably better to, we have a grant to go for it.
One of the things that's, we're through that conversation is taking from that, this is with Ms. Gange, is if we do the large buses, is hit full force, alright, we know many, and attack grants that way, that are specific to that. The one thing with mini buses is, what's the difference in cost on them?
Um, I think it's like, the ones that we were looking at, well, they, it's like sixty-five thousand, I think, for a brand new mini.
And you're saying seventy to a hundred for a longer bus?
Well, they were saying more like ninety to a hundred.
Ninety to a hundred.
Unless you can find something that was like a demo, that fit the criteria for the grant, which can happen.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, so I mean, why do we use mini buses? Do they really save us a lot? I guess.
The part of the reason why we use mini buses is the ability to get in and out of driveways. So we're going up to houses that are on rock roads, you can't turn a bus around in there. That's the biggest part.
Okay. So, all I'm worried then is, okay, if we spend money for a longer bus, like how critical is that need compared to the mini bus thing? The sense of the money we're gonna be spending to get the longer bus, you know, will, might impact our ability to afford it, buses in the future. I mean, can we go three years and be okay without a long bus, but only one year and get a, you know, and then the mini bus is a problem? Or, I mean, is there any critical need here, I guess?
It's not necessarily critical. I would like to, at some point, look at maybe building another mini bus route, which then at that point, we might need another one. But long term, if, if we could try to go for our mini buses next year, that'd probably be the best route. Because the need for the big buses to try to get them back up to par, then it's likely a lot greater.
Right.
And you don't have many more than even fit the requirements of the grant?
No, I don't.
As far as big buses, like we'll be kind of maxed out on what we could even apply.
Oh, okay.
Right, so we're, we're nearing the end of that, so.
And we got lucky with the state one, because we actually went, someone didn't accept the grant, so we got picked through the lottery.
Right.
Those are ours. It's nice, that's where we've kind of had those conversations as to, you know, like forty, you know, we have a twenty thousand or forty-two grand. If it applied, that's almost, like my, my, that's almost the mini bus next year if you get that grant. It's kind of like, when you're buying it, is, oh, we have to focus, as I was here today, like, we're gonna go big buses, that's a need. And then we're going to address.
I mean, this isn't on the agenda per se, it's a vote yet, but paying for this thing, you're talking about financing right now. I mean, I know we don't wanna hit the reserves or anything, but if we just, should we do it from a reserve or something like that?
I mean, we can. I would really prefer to see how our insurance pans out for the remainder of the year.
Okay.
That's a concern that I have. And we don't have to decide like that piece of it right now.
Yeah, I just, the financial efficiency of it, just, I think you're borrowing.
Right, no, I, I understand.
And we'll pencil that out to, probably RF, like P it, like, what are the rates and, you know?
Do the rates are lower, that's a good thing, I guess, but it is.
Still looking at that, because it, you know, it's like anything else, is the facility may, you're, you know, buses are a thousand, but that's, you know, it's all capital.
I guess they just have five years' year of percent.
Give it time. We're going that way right now. That isn't obviously a board thing there, but also it's us communicating with the state. And we have, because we're like, to hold our position, we're like, yeah, we'll take it, but obviously, the board's like, oh, we went, I've been calling like, no, we're not. We want to hold that, they, well, they needed to have a.
Ten days from the date of the letter, so we had to respond.
So, so I was gonna.
And I guess whoever let it go couldn't, you know, it's the same kind of situation.
So.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I'm glad we got them.
Right.
Really good, I am really glad.
And it allows us to buy a brand new, which will last longer and have a better warranty and.
Better warranties on, on the.
How long do you think they'll last? How long do you think they'll last?
Well, hopefully, they'll last a really long time. Some of our buses are getting like, what, fourteen, fifteen years old right now.
You're replacing the two thousand sixes.
And, and I only had two of those, so, yeah. And they need replacing.
Sure.
Terribly, but, yeah.
So, because the devil, over the last few years, we've bought five buses, I guess.
The last two years, yeah.
Well, and how many buses do we have?
There's forty-three, thirty, thirty-three routes, forty-three buses. So I have spares that I can use whenever they're off the road getting repairs. And there's been a lot of preventative maintenance being done over the past, since, no losses, since, really, since August. So they've really been hit hard to try to keep them up to par.
I hope everybody, I mean, I'm sure everybody does, but, no. Can you tell them how many kids can sit in a bus and how many get in a seat, or seats? I think, when I first found that out with my own kids, I was like, uh, what? You know, we spent all these years buckling them into the right car seats, and they get in, three in a seat, seventy, how many kids can go in there?
There can be, we have seventy-one passengers, we have seventy-seven passengers.
Don't we get that?
Yeah, there's a lot of kids on them.
Yeah, and they're, they're stick figures. So think about three in a seat, I know that they try not, you know, but.
Yeah, that all depends on ridership, but, yes.
Yeah, and when they start off, until that first route, there really are three kids in a seat from kindergarten through six. Think about the fun that it is to drive, I just, whoo, I'm not gonna be a bus driver. Sorry, I'm a driver.
Well, we try to make those first, the first stops, the ones that let off the most kids, so they're not.
The daycare stop, but, but for a large part of mine, there are three in a seat, you know?
That's true.
If you think about that, when they have a little thunderbender and all the headset would knock together, I mean, that's the way I think, like, ah! But we need the buses.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks a lot for doing that. Congratulations again.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we'll move to the financial report, report, and jump again, while we'll.
I'll let my grass do the talking. We are running consistent, they have no concerns. And you can tell by the lines, they just, we're consistent from month to month on how those trend lines fall, with the total fund balance, and then, which looks a little higher, because it includes debt service, and then this is our operating, so. We're going, our line's going up, which means we're getting all of our county money in from our local taxes, which is, well. When I did this at the end of December, we were a little behind on our tax money, but then I received an extra payment this month in January, so, all good. I'm not concerned about that. But our revenue is trending about the same as it did last year this time. Our expenditures are up a little bit, and that's mainly because of that big intro, and we had to make in December. That's key on that one. So, like I said, after I did this report, I got another huge chunk of tax money, so I'm already surpassed local current tax revenue now. We'll focus on the dividend number and what comes in, so that's what I'll be watching. And I will do a budget amendment next month that will adjust some of those things. Some of our big payments that we've already made and the big revenue chunks that was added, and so. Beyond that, I've submitted all my annual reporting, like post-audit reporting with the state. I have to upload all of that with D E S I, report on our bond indebtedness, report through the federal audit clearinghouse, because we receive federal funds. And then the platform called Emma is where we put all of our operating information in regards to our bonds to state compliance. So all that stuff's done. I think our newspaper ad ran last week, so we met all of our requirements in that respect. So, talking about last year's budget, or last year's audit, and next line, next year's budget. So when we met with the principals, I guess in January after Christmas, we scheduled a date, February twenty-fifth, to have our, the budget meetings that we have with the buildings. And I usually reach out to the board members that are on that audit finance, I like, committee. So Mr. Cruz, Mrs. Saharsky, and Mr. Schuster. We've scheduled that meeting for February twenty-fifth, four PM here. But if you're able to make it, I do a presentation, the buildings break out, and just kind of start working on their budgets with the allocations that I give them. Then a lot of the overarching, like salaries, insurance, that's all for different committees. And those are some big budget pieces that play in at a later date, so. That's really all I have this month. If you have any questions, anything, you can just call me anytime or email me if you do.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to technology.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
So the seventy-nine work orders completed eighty-four. Working on the high school computer labs this year, trying to get them literally up to speed, like get them faster, and also make sure they have the latest operating system on those. That way, the students can be more productive in class. And I have to wait for those progress bars and those applications to load. We're working on completing that by the end of this year. We did have a delay on a grant for a computer lab. It's gonna go in, that's a brand new computer lab. And that was with the Intel processors. So once we get those in, hopefully, next month, then we'll be able to do that project and then finish moving computers around the way we need to get our computer labs where they are gonna be for next year. We phased out all of our Windows Seven computers, there's just a handful out there that we know about. That was over five hundred computers that we had to upgrade between this past summer and now. So guys worked really hard and tried to work with everybody during school hours, a lot of those during school hours. Tried to get those upgraded, and so kind of working in between hours. So I appreciate them working with everybody and making sure that everything got transferred over. With the primaries, there's a PTO, received a grant, wasn't the full amount that we were hoping for. So we got cutbacks, we're just finalizing that quote. And the technology department's gonna work with that company that's gonna install these intercom speakers to make up for that cost reduction in the grant. So we'll be providing the labor, and it looks like all the parts and everything else will come out of the grant money. So that'd be great, so, you know, that, then we get that project going. We started with one outdoors, now an intercom speaker, and then we ended up with four outdoor speakers. So hopefully, it can sound as good as the junior high, is what we're hoping. It sounds really good down there. So anyways, hopefully, we can get that done within the next two months, so.
Does that mean we have to do things without one of the speakers?
I think the high school has outdoor. Does elementary have outdoor? Intercom speakers? Yeah, the elementary has it. That led every school, the junior high does, and that was part of the farm.
Just curious. Then that takes us to our festival facility.
Ah, good evening, everyone. Well, my report is short. We haven't really done much this past month, so we'll just kind of, just kind of give a quick recap. Not a lot, truly, beyond you, it's been quite a, kind of light, but that's okay. I know, you know, all wants to hear this, so get a chance. Anyway, no, I actually, I've been pretty crazy the past couple of months. We've been doing some programming and trying to plan some stuff, and I think we're making some progress, I'll be honest with you. Committees have been great, enjoying some of the writerage meetings and the facilities meetings and stuff. And I think they've been really helpful for us as a group, so. We did have the Department of Conservation come out, our rep for the Department of Conservation named Heather. She came out and spent about two hours with us, if you're well back, at the pond, or the ponds. So, and they'll be back out in spring to help us kind of get it all up and running, so we're looking forward to that. So we're doing good with that. Rock Miller Fine Gate got us our little manuals, we've been waiting and harping on them for months, things like, what these are for, is our manuals that we did all the rebuilding for and so forth, we did all the paperwork for them. Normally get three copies this year, and one copy of the stays in the buildings. We opted out of that this year, went to two hard copies in one digital file. The digital files we find very much easier for us when HVAC and electrical plumbing, we can actually take them on-site with us and put them in our laptops, and we can bring them to some matics, so we know what we're working on right then and there. So, a little newer technology is what we're looking at. So we did get the other two hard copies, one stays at my, my shop, and one stays in our blueprint room, which our blueprint room is designed down in supply room, so everyone everywhere needs to get down there to see it. But that's where we're at on, before I came here about a day ago, I guess, we got letters from MRUE. They will be on-site, starting end of next week, for about two weeks, on the east campus, doing, looking for all the wire, wiring issues we might have. These are where they come in and do tests on the wire and the loads. They're called hotspots. We did this about three years ago for the primary and high school, and they actually had replaced a couple of the underground lines at the primary, because it wasn't holding the surface right and power. So that's been, what that will help us with is actually keeping the cost down, and that's what we're looking for, of course, always. So they are on-site here in the next couple of weeks, will be helping us, that's the school district. They do this for everybody, not just us, but it's our turn, so they'll be coming on board to check these hotspots out, and we'll give you updated sections to lead their path, so hopefully by the next board meeting. Other than, pretty well, like I said, we've just been pretty well just keeping up with things, what snow come down with them, so they're gonna need it. So, thank you for the building, so that's all we got, there's a, a pretty.
Thank you for the review.
Thank you.
All right, so that completes all of our monthly reports. We did not have any unfinished business from the last meeting, so we'll forge ahead and begin new business. And the first item. has to do with a sale agreement. So I need a motion to approve the purchase-sale agreement to sell approximately 1.8 acres of surplus property to the Hillsborough Fire Protection District for the sum of $76,500. Okay, so first was Angie and second was Jay. Something we've been talking about for a while, so if you have any questions or does John need to discuss anything with us regarding that?
Just the part of the year, just the part there, we listed in the newspaper. And I put all the historical postings on the leader and the documents in there, so we'll have that if you ever want to search those items going forward. But this is the purchase-sale agreement between us and the Hillsborough Fire Protection District for that $76,500, which includes the $15,000 for the survey that we just reviewed.
And then the next few items are all
All related.
As well. Okay, so any other questions? All right, the motion is to approve this purchase-sale agreement. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. The next item is the approval of a special warranty deed. Again, sorry, I think there's being slow. So I need a motion to approve the special warranty deed to the Hillsborough Fire Protection District. Somebody? You pick. I think it would be to Renee and then Any discussion about the deed? All right, all in favor of approving this special warranty deed, raise your hand. Very good. The next one has to do with the easement. We need a motion to approve the conveyance of a road and utility easement to the Hillsborough Fire Protection District. Thank you, Angie and Beth. Any other questions about that? I know we've discussed this before. Okay, all in favor of approving that? Very good, motion carries. Okay, and then this is the resolution of the board. So we need a motion to approve the resolutions of the Board of Education of the Hillsborough Art3 School District as they pertain to the sale of approximately approximately eight acres of real property. Thank you. Again, this is all time, so do the same thing. So all in favor of approving these resolutions? Okay, motion carries. All right. Item E is a little different. New program for us. Are we just discussing it or will we prove it to them?
It needs to be approved by the board.
Okay.
Yes, Scott, Serene Now is not due, so I can't do that, I would discuss this, thank you. Jefferson Barracks POW MIA Museum is seeking help to help the school district to become a POW designated campus, which means our responsibilities then would be to educate our students in grades five through twelve, raise community awareness and display the flag. They established this program in an effort to raise awareness and education across the nation. This is open invitation to school districts and buildings across the United States. Join this program and help ensure our national promise that no one but behind the building is forgotten, honestly. This is at no cost to the district. There's a small fee at the very beginning in order to purchase the sign and to purchase the internet, and the other two buildings are billions of dollars.
And that's the $500?
It's a total of $800, I believe, it was by
That's a cool idea.
So we are seeking approval to be recognized as an MIA POW designated campus.
So I have a few questions that are in the, it says that you need to have assemblies, school programs, or classroom instruction. How would it be implemented, the whole communication of the OWE?
Well, it'll be implemented within each building a little bit differently. I know on Veterans Day here at the intermediate, we do introduce that kind of because of the age level too, as there is true. So it'll be all within the classrooms, I never knew for some reason.
And there are different events, so there'll be a chair set aside for the, he said, like at our board meetings, we would have an extra chair
To represent.
To represent. He really is passionate about this, and he's got a goal, yeah, he's got a goal with this.
I was just looking for just some specifics, that's all. I know they're somewhat general, but well, they say, you know, things like activities to raise community awareness, you know, does he have an idea?
And that could be just as simple as having a flag outside.
I don't know that he's got a specific activity. No, I don't know that he's got specific activity.
Well, he has students involved in a day of raising the flag and taking it down, holding it, carrying the flag and so forth. They do a whole lot of that. Well, it's also part of our scheme. Right, and so there's hard to find the number of hours for a number of activities that they have to do.
Right.
So I think it's kind of left up to the next, you know, as long as the days go on, administrators are moving this awareness into their buildings. I don't think it's a blind eye.
Sure, it's a bell as it goes to.
Sure, I just, you know, I, yeah, I don't want us to be taking on a title when I get over the top to that kind of thing.
Sure.
And I'm sure you'll, you know, you'll create efforts, I just
Well, I know the Veterans, the Veterans Day assemblies have really gotten bigger over the years and kind of more community evolved in that too, so I'm assuming we'll tie that in there.
There's something I'm noticing there's that, it looks like we would have to present in front of their board. Is that what I'm reading right? Like Mr. Reed Now would present in front of their board, then their board would determine if we've met.
Their criteria, yeah.
So, I mean, if Mr. Reed Now feels confident that we are meeting criteria, I feel confident. I don't think he would present in front of the board if he was in the board.
Sure, and I'm not worried about that, but just wanted more information, that's all.
I don't think we're just Yes, we do. There is a, I guess we did make the motion, yeah. Okay, so we, we need, the motion is to approve to be recognized as an MIA POW designated campus. Any other discussion?
His goal at this is approved is to work with Cal at the OZR, and that would be the first EOMR student. Because they've got a huge patriotism program, and their campus is littered with monuments to all the different when you go to the introductory meeting, when your kids go to class two, the president of Calhoun talks about how students these days don't necessarily know why we should be patriotic, why we should love the country. Don't know about the wars, the wars were allowed, and so it's kind of a raise awareness to that too.
Well, in fifth and sixth graders, they go to DC from time to time and see all those barbers, so that's, I think it's cool. So the motion on the floor then is to approve this program. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? All right, motion carries then. Okay, the next item has to do with the naming of our new property, and we have a board policy that instructs a committee to present some name choices to us, and some of us were there during that committee. But I think our job this evening is to approve the name and make an official name for the property. If you look down in your information, it gave you two choices, is that right? So we have Hawk Farm at Rital Ridge, and the rationale was that it was a blending of the old name of Rital Ridge with the new concept attaching it to our school district with the district stamp. And that was, that name receives 21 votes when the committee voted, and the name of Rital Ridge Acres, which was the original name, received 11 votes. So it's kind of up to us now to decide what we would like to choose.
This is always at the meeting, and you could tell as the meeting went on, when people started moving away from Rital Ridge Acres, the disappointment that she was showing, and I think even after the meeting, talking to different people, they may be second guessing the Hawk Farm, someone came and said, where's the A and B, you're going to be on the Burn Farm. But I personally, myself, think, you know, we can name different parts of the farm once this is done. Copies of blessing to us and our family and
I happened to be sitting at the table with Diana Hall, and one of my first questions was, how long has it been named Rital Ridge Acres? And she said fifty years. And then as our evening progressed or the committee progressed, she also kind of shared that in her lifetime, as, you know, they were involved in horses, obviously, and she wants to bring horses back to the farm. But when they traveled, people would ask her where she's from. Oh, I'm from Hillsborough, a small town south of St. Louis. Oh, you're associated with Rital Ridge Acres. I mean, that name was connected with Hillsborough, you know, very strongly. And, you know, I always kind of assumed that when the concrete took it over, that, you know, they were the ones that had actually named it. So that kind of capsulized that too. And the, to me, the older than new, when you drive by the sign right now, you do have the older than new because Jim did the sign for Hillsborough Art3 right underneath it, and, you know, I think that is in itself is a statement. You know, it's transfer hands now.
Well, and then at my table, the members discussed that Rital Ridge focuses mainly on horses because of the term "bridal." And it's, right now, we don't have horses. We're doing agricultural activities and other animals, and so they were looking for the word "farm" to be attached to because that's the intent as far to be a farm as well.
I think there could be a farm in
They should have gone for Rital Ridge Acres Farm.
I mean, it's twenty, here 21 voted for that one.
Yeah, I mean, with the committee process, what was the vote for? Was it just to show
Well, so they have something to present.
But I'm saying, like, if they vote for this, then we say something else.
Yeah, there were five names in all, I think, that were
Four, okay.
Four, two, the board tells.
So they don't really just say one or the other?
They was just part of the process of coming up with.
And I asked for a final vote, like which of the two?
I'm sure we're going to make everything happy, and this whole group got together and did it. I feel like it would be kind of a disservice to the time it's spent on it if we didn't go with what they voted for. But yet
Rob, what did Rob just say?
Well, he might have voted, I guess he was one of the 21.
Well, I think people weren't in attendance.
I mean, do they want to do another vote?
It was like fifty, wasn't it?
Close to.
Forty.
I think there's fifty, there are fifty other Twenty-two there. I mean, they voted
I have to confess, I'm not, I like Rital Ridge Acres more than the other name, but I just, you know, I don't want to be like, hey, good, glad you have a recommendation, now we'll do this.
Yeah, that's kind of
The streets are also, I didn't know that the streets are named also
What, right away?
The roads that go through the farm are named right away.
For the cheap of the same, but it affects it.
And I look at the name, the Hawk Farm at Rital Ridge, to me, that's kind of wanting to cover some, has a lot of that.
Okay.
Okay, well, we need somebody then, I guess, to make a recommendation for us to make the motion, and then we can vote and see how it turns out.
Yep.
Is that agreeable?
You can move from right away if you want.
Okay, or, hang on, what other option?
It's the first time that we've got together for the board. And not to stretch it out, but I mean, we have the board, is there's a different perspective, is to go back, because I understand But I understand, it's a tough situation, because I have
Is the committee okay to meet here?
It's, well, we're going to, we're going to meet, and not that, you know, it's some time to reflect. Because here's the thing, we are naming something that may last fifty, do you want to, as some of those items. And I went back and forth, and I visited Dr. Freeman on it, I had visited with Ross Hall at length. And, you know, listen to her, I just, we can go back and talk about, let's, here's the board's consideration. What are some things that, I mean, it's like, this isn't, it has to be, I'd rather get it right than get it timely, if that makes sense.
I can share that I don't care for either one. I was going to say, I don't care for either name. I was going to ask if we could send it back to the drawing board.
What if we ask the kids, I know that sounds crazy, but I mean, let's pull, I don't know, pull it more from the community, this is, I don't know, is that crazy?
Whoever can hold the logo, we go with the name.
I mean, it is
Can we have the kids send us suggestions? Hello, to the committee, you know, and the committee take all the suggestions, we may come up with something that just, it's going to be much more meaningful and impactful.
If nothing else, it'll stay Rital Ridge Acres for quite a bit longer. Yeah, so keep in mind, you know, we can name the different buildings, because it's, yeah, it's Rital Ridge Acres, which has a fire department there, might have a department, might have a
H R three at Rital Ridge.
But let the kids, I mean, let, do a submission, let the kids submit.
And maybe they'll come up with some other things, like, perhaps, for other buildings.
Hollossy was the one that said a committee had to submit.
Yes, and they can, I will take it back to the committee, and we can discuss it. Because it is, here's, of all the things that, this doesn't need to be the controversial now.
I mean, I think we need something that incorporates a little bit of the history along with the potential of the future, right?
Right.
So I don't think either one of these names really suits.
Yeah, I kind of agree.
Because I mean, no, I think there's opportunity for the committee to maybe try a different approach and come back with some, probably some better, better opportunities, better names, just besides that.
Either they have submission or complicated or
But I mean, that's, but that's, I'm looking at
Your suggestions that we can take to the committee.
Hollossy says at least two or just two?
At, at least.
At least, so they can submit three or four, sure, well, we'll just I was just thinking, you know, it's, right now, it's like the two-party system, nobody likes to sit on the board, but the regular ones are two-eleven, so, good.
When is the, the next facility, we need, I mean
Well, let's just say, Dr. I, this, this could be in the district for fifty years or more, we want to make sure we get the time to do this. What's it saying, targeting?
Seriously, you guys who are at the committee some meetings, if you have a name, if you have something you feel, submit it so then it can be shared at the, at the meeting as well.
I, I know maybe some are suggesting the kids, there may be the building I I know maybe some are suggesting the kids, there may be the buildings, I think it would be fun. I think that a lot of the kids already know what's going on, they weren't holding in.
Hold them in.
And then you could graduate and say, you know, fifty years later, I.
Yeah, that's kind of cool.
I remember when they asked.
We gotta remember that because that's really where, I mean, sometimes we forget about the kids that we're here for. I don't know, they might want to have.
Well, the people that were there that attended the meeting, they were all excited. They had lots of, lots of ideas and there's lots of enthusiasm towards the project.
So is, should we make a motion to table this?
Yes. Well, do we have to table it? Cause we didn't vote or anything.
But it was up to send it.
Discuss this. But, okay, make a motion then to table.
I do the table.
Okay. Will we be able to have it brought back into new business?
Potentially, basically like sending it back to me.
Right, okay. Okay, all in favor of tabling the naming of the property? All opposed? Stain, did you vote? Sorry, I didn't see.
I'm not gonna be at the next meeting if any other board member wants to take this.
Just raised two hands.
Uh, February tenth, is that what you said? It's a Monday.
Monday.
Okay, the last item on the agenda. Do you want to talk about this first? So this year, if you recall nineteen twenty school year was the first year that um, the state changed the project's calendar. We used to have to go by days and minutes of hours, now we just have to go by hours, one thousand and forty-four hours. We had to build in so many hour of our calendar for inclement weather. Um, we actually built a calendar with one thousand and sixty-four and eight hours. Um, with uh, the notion of the first three inclement weather days would be not added to the end of the calendar school year. So we have had six items, so we have exceeded our grade. Um, in doing so, our teacher, excuse me, our contracted employees, for example, a teacher's contract of one hundred and eighty days. By forgiving those three days for students, obviously they will not be in attendance for those three days. We are asking that we forgive those days of contracted employees, not only teachers, but anybody who is a contracted employee. Um, with the expectation that if we have some trades and things over the summertime or breaks since we've had some pretty training at the primary, that they would make every effort to tend us to act as a trade off. Correct.
But if we discuss that as kind of, you know, it's unique this year, looking at it year by year basis. Is, and we've talked with our teaching staff and it's kind of that teach all time. Is kind of the philosophy of, rather than making someone just come in for three days, just to put in your time. Is that the board and the district respects professionalism, you know, you're doing those. But like I said, if there's something that we need you to do, like in the summer, or let's say we move graduation to the first weekend of a date. Is, you need to go, is, that's part of being a professional is, and if it's a fight to be like, it's my summer, I'm not gonna go to training. And we're not gonna abuse that, uh, people like, hey, every year, same people are going to, you know, that training and so. Some years it may not even happen, they may not have any snow. You do know. But kind of, I think that's important to share with our staff is kind of, it works both ways. It's not the board values your professionalism, but also expects it. And if it's personal because we have a curriculum change or what, and I don't, you're going to a training because you want to start a new program. We've had people go to the J A C, San Francisco's a J A C training every year. During the summer. Uh, that's not extra pay, you know, that's just part of being a professional, part of doing your job. Like, it is, and if it's an issue, then next year at this time, we're having that discussion like, it's that give and take. Because, you know, I would say like with H R, we have to make a policy, you have to, everybody loses. But, you know, the keep in score, some year, you may have to go to a training, it's three days. Well, I had to work three days anyhow, and Melissa Ben. All right, that's, next year you may not. You know, high school, I had to go to graduation, primary, it all works out. And that's all.
Sorry.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the forgiveness of three snow days for contracted employees. Is that correct? Yeah. To approve the forgiveness of three snow days for all contracted employees.
Yes, recently, Neil did say.
Okay. So the board is acting with good faith by doing this.
Well, and I was talking to him because I would have to expect the staff members, that was the H R person I mean. Uh, I'm gonna be busy with somebody that's.
They don't go to the workshop when they're asked to go.
How big, somebody doesn't.
Well, that person then just comes to the school. Okay, so the motion is on the floor to to forgive those three snow days. All in favor? And is this something that we'll look at or we'll have to do every year? Okay. So, seven. Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand.